Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I have the notice of this meeting provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Court address in Milltown Patch and the Milltown Patch Public Service Department's website and posting such notice at the Office of Superior and Insulin Boxers and each elementary, middle and secondary school in the district. You will have your public allegiance and owner's signs for housing, or for mental health and the people who have been tested by 1986. Alan is the mother of high school teacher Alan Hill and grandmother to student representative Alan Hill. Our Boston parents of the rebellion and both families.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now hear public comment limited to agenda items only. Seeing none, we will move on to our oath of office for newly elected board members and terms. We have Thomas Dymo, Joan Minuies, and Deborah White. If you could all please come forward. So if you raise your right hand, or if you can't, it's also in front of you. You'll state your name as appropriate and we'll read for the rest of you. So I, Joan Minuies-
Thomas Jaimo.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States-
And I make it clear-
-and the Constitution of Jersey and that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people so told by God.
I-
Deborah Wright.
Joan Minuies.
Thomas Jaimo.
Do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law in the office of member of the Board of Education that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law, disqualified from membership due to the creation of any crime or offense as close to my role, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability so told by God. Congratulations. We've also included the report of election results as an attachment to the agenda reflecting the election of three members that were just sworn in. Now we will take roll call of the newly assembled board. Mrs. Camentini?
Here.
Mr. DeFranco?
Here.
Mr. Donlin?
Here.
Mr. Dymo?
Present.
Mr. Little?
Mrs. Minuies?
Here.
Mrs. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Stella?
Here.
Mrs. Wright? At this time, we will take nominations for the office of president for the Board of Education for the upcoming 2019 year.
I'd like to nominate Kim Rogers for president.
I'd like to second that nomination.
Discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. Mrs. Camentini?
Yes.
Mr. DeFranco?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mr. Dymo?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Mrs. Minuies?
Yes.
Mrs. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Stella?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, I'm done now.
I'd just like to thank you all for the honor and the privilege to serve as your president. We've had a very successful year under the leadership of Mrs. Minuies, and I believe that in the past year, we have cultivated a trust and mutual respect and that I've grown to cherish, I've grown to appreciate, and I think that with this new trust and with the addition of our two new board members, I think we're in the perfect position to step away from the committee as a whole, and I'd like to reinstate some committees that we already have in our bylaw. I'd like to reinstate the personality-
Mrs. Rogers, as point of order, we need to move on with nominations for vice president.
Oh, sorry. I'm waiting. Thank you.
Okay. One more action item.
All right, good. So I'll have the nominations now for vice president, please.
I'd like to nominate Robin Steller.
I'll second that nomination.
We'll take a roll call vote. Mrs. Camentini?
Yes.
Mr. DeFranco?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mr. Dymo?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuies?
Yes.
Mrs. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Stella?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. And then the last item that we have to address as an action item is the-
The calendar, right? We need to work on the board calendar. So I guess we can open that up to discussion. Dr. George was nice enough to ask us all for our input and email us with everybody's conflicts.
Can we open the mic first to the public? Can we do that? Is that a good thing?
We did it for agenda items.
We did it for agenda items. We can open it at, I mean, we already did it for the agenda items, so-
The public realized it was about the calendar. They had something to say. I'm just wanting, I'm just asking.
Well, it was on the agenda, I guess. Does anyone want to comment on the calendar? This is the board meeting calendar, just to be clear, too. It's not the school, it's not the school calendar. Okay, okay.
Board meeting calendar. Sue Griffin, Milltown. I see on this calendar that there is no workshop meeting in December. Oh, what is it, another?
Yes, I'll do that. It's nice and new, and we have to turn it off for you, too.
Okay. All right, start again. Yes. Sue Griffin, Milltown. Congratulations, everybody. Looking forward to a wonderful year. Once again, I'm up here about the calendar, and I see that there is no workshop meeting in December. This has been an issue in the past, and we've addressed this numerous times. Could it perhaps be that you schedule a tentative meeting for December and then pull it if there is no reason to have it? It's better to have it on the calendar and take it away than it is not to have it there. Some things do creep up in December. Sometimes there is a reason to have it, a workshop meeting, if things need to be discussed. Sometimes there are reasons. There have been last-minute additions in the December meeting that have created animosity or hard feelings moving forward into the new year that can be eliminated by discussion. Perhaps there's valid reasons to continue with a workshop meeting in December and have it scheduled, and then you can always pull it away. That would be my suggestion, something for you to discuss and consider. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one else come to the mic, I'd like to move on to the next agenda item, which is the calendar. So like I was saying, Dr. George had asked us all our input, and what I noticed was that there are four of us who have conflicts on the Tuesday night meetings, and I think a really easy fix would be to just switch the Tuesday night meetings to Monday night meetings, either the second, third, or fourth Monday of the month. We just have to decide which one. The second Monday of the month conflicts with our shared services meeting, but we could certainly ask for them to reschedule. And the third Monday of the month are the township committee meetings, and if a member of the public wants to vote both, that would be a little difficult, but-
Well, I have to say Monday nights are not good for me.
Okay. Just to add-
Do you switch these Wednesdays?
Yeah, just to add to that, our meetings have been on Tuesdays and Wednesdays for many, many years, and everybody who ran for the board knew if they're coming to the meetings, everybody knew when the meetings are. To try to change them to Monday nights, it's just not fair to the rest of us. We all made our plans knowing that we were on the board, we were elected, these were the meeting dates. Of course, they get changed. Every once in a while, there's a few on Mondays, and we have to change our plans, but that's not for every single one. It's just not fair to those of us that have made our schedules for Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
I understand what you're saying, but with that logic, then anyone who ran for board ed would have to have Tuesday and Wednesday, not three. And I would like to open it up to people who don't and take people into consideration and consider all of our schedules so that I can accommodate all the board members.
The only thing that I would add is that, we're just talking about the meeting schedules, I think if we're going to keep a workshop voting meeting model, then that, the Tuesday meeting would have, we'd have to have one meeting in the third week and one meeting in the fourth week of the month, so, because we really would have to have the workshop before the voting meeting if we're going to keep that model, so, whatever days you're looking at, you know, they need to flow that way.
Okay, so this has to be the third and the fourth.
The other thing, just a kind of discussion, and I'm sure we can work with you, but if one of the two meetings was going to be on a Wednesday, the workshop meeting being on a Wednesday gives us as much time as possible to bring as much information to the board as possible. That's why I thought we changed it to Tuesday.
Yeah, it has to be Tuesday. Then it's Friday. Yeah. That's why I said Tuesday, Wednesday. I just want to-
If we do Wednesday, Wednesday, we really use Monday. If we do Monday, to your point, we need to, I see what you're saying.
Right. I just want to make-
I just wanted to make sure, sometimes my point, we have to, you're saying, to get as much to be voted on in actual vote that, the last meeting, the actual meeting, being as far as as quick as possible-
Yeah, we were trying to spread the amount for that one.
My point is to bring as much to the board in the workshop prior to the next week's action. Monday just cuts down on that a little bit, but the other side of that, to your point is it gives us the most amount of time to get everything out.
Dr. George, I just want to bring an attention to the board. Mondays normally are holiday meetings, but holidays, you always have your holidays, that people are off, schools close on Monday, so be careful by Monday. This could be a problem.
Yeah, I went to the calendar that month, but thank you.
And the other thing is, I'm one of the people who had a problem with the calendar. First, May 1st, we only have one meeting in April. Why, we have a meeting on May 1st and not April 30th?
Well, we were trying to schedule that meeting to accommodate voting on the budget.
Yeah.
On May 1st, can we vote on budget on May 30th? I mean, April 30th?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember why we were doing, I know that-
May 1st is a Wednesday, April 30th.
Was that the first day back from the break?
The first thing is that, yeah. It's, it just-
I think we're out, the, the schools are closed the week before that, so I think-
We're coming back on a Tuesday, not a Monday?
I thought we were coming back on 20th.
Yeah. That's what I believe we're coming back on. I looked at the calendar carefully, and I really went over it. I have all my notes here, that's why. I do agree, I have, Mrs. Griffin got up there, but this is a thing that I bring up every year. I think workshops should be scheduled, I'm all for canceling, but if you don't put it on, there's nine of us. You don't, I have a very busy calendar. I haven't locked down. I have no problem with canceling it, but if we have it on the calendar and we simply need it, we have it, because there are times we need it. There's times you don't need it, Dr. George, and you can cancel it. That's your priority, we can do that stuff. It's not a problem, but if you don't put it down, you just don't have it.
The other thing, the other thing I just want to add is, the budget calendar hasn't been published for this year. Yes, we were trying to estimate when we would have to vote on it, so that is subject to change as well, because we haven't been given the dates for the budget calendar. We were going by what it's been in the past.
But we can call a special meeting for budget.
Or, or the date could be changed when we get the budget calendar. I'm just saying that hasn't been finalized yet.
Because we've done that at nine o'clock in the morning sometimes. We have to run in and do something. I remember being in the cafeteria, we got the board member, we have to make a vote, we have to get it. I was doing, I know it was before, but I'm trying to explain to you.
And you have to vote public hearing when you vote on the budget, too.
I just, I just want to point out, too, the only time we have one meeting a month is, you know, those are the three shortest months of the year, and for this year, for example, for this year, for example, the month of December is very busy in schools, as we all know, with the holidays, celebrations and all that, so, and for parents having, just to be most transparent, having for December, November, April, having them focused on one night when they have, when, when we make an accommodation meeting of a voting meeting and also an update, just gives us the best chance that most people-
The parents, but I, I would think the parents would choose, um, the voting meeting, workshop meeting is something that we need as a board, because we have a new president, new vice president, the new president's bringing in new things to us, new ideas somehow we're going to do. I just think we need it. I think, and we can take it away. I'm all for saying, cancel it, but I think if you don't put it down, you just don't have, but I tell you this every year, you can go back to every date. I tell you, I say this every time, because I really believe it's important. That's it, that's my two cents.
Maybe we can put in tentative dates for workshops in November, December, then if we need to cancel them, we can cancel them. But, yeah.
I just want to clarify something, Pam. I want to make sure I got what you said right. You're looking, you're looking to, it's okay to change the meeting dates for the people that want to run for the board in the future, and it's not the consideration of the people that are sitting here now.
It's because it was four people. Are there four of us that have a problem with organizing or floor war?
Are, are you one of them?
I'm one of the people.
So, we've been having meetings on Tuesday and Wednesday for the whole last year?
Yeah, yeah, and what I do is I just work out with my employer, right? But if I didn't have to, that would be great, since there are three other people who also have, have an issue. That's the only reason I mentioned. If it was just me, then it affects other people.
I think, I think at the end of the day, this is always going to be an issue with volunteer organizations, right? You know, Mr. Little came in a little late, I've probably let up his meetings. You know, this is, there it is. This is, this is always going to be a problem. I think, you know, we're, we're of nine, we all kind of know what we get into when we run. You know, we all, I think, I think you mentioned in your preamble before that, you know, we have, we have tried to change the culture to be more inclusive and accommodating and trusting of each other, so I think, you know, the way to move forward on this issue is to understand that as a board of nine, the majority has to rule, there could be some flexibility. You know, I, I agree with Joan that, you know, our meetings have been on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and a lot of us have reconfigured our calendars. You know, I, you know, I'm very famously have my carpool app there. So, you know, we all have different, you know, pressures on our time. I think it wouldn't hurt to maybe nail down the first couple of meetings in January, come back and have a revised calendar, even if it's not, you know, if we move a couple Tuesdays to Mondays to be as accommodating as possible, I think that might be a fair compromise. You know, anything we can do to, to move this issue forward. I hate to see us hung up on this issue on reorganization night. I think it's, it's more important to, you know, try and find that compromise and get forward. Yeah, for me, the third Tuesdays of the month are direct conflict. First year is here, it was Tuesday, it was Wednesday, then Tuesday, and then it was Tuesday, Wednesday, the third week, the third week of the month, Tuesdays, I have a direct conflict. So this year, I just had to just make sacrifices on the other end of it, but if they altered some of them, like you were saying, or all of them, maybe better. But I was one, I was one of the people, the third Tuesday in particular.
And I have a question. The Monday you're talking about, is it the second Monday? Is it the Monday, we have the second Tuesday, right, as our day, you're talking about the second Monday, the Monday right before that?
I'm saying that we would have to decide as, as, as we want, the second Tuesday or the third Tuesday or the fourth Tuesday.
What is it?
The third Tuesday.
Oh, the third Tuesday. Okay, I'm just looking at the Monday.
Third Tuesday and the fourth Wednesday.
So, and the third Monday is no good for you, Josh?
Yeah, nothing.
So now-
What about back to the Wednesday, Wednesday?
Um, I can't, I definitely can't do Wednesdays. I'm booked on that Wednesday right after a workshop. I have, I've got that one. So I'm just looking at my calendar, that's what I'm trying to look. So you're talking about the first Monday or the third Monday?
I think Amy just said has to be the third Monday.
No, has to be the first Monday.
I didn't say one day of the week. I'm just saying if you're going to keep the workshop voting, then the workshop is generally the third week of the month, the voting is the fourth, and the reason we do the workshop in the third week is because then we have enough time in the month to get financial information together and other things that we need. If we have the meetings too early in the month, we don't have enough to really present to the board.
That was, that was right.
Yes, yes. So we generally have been doing third week in a month, fourth week in a month, whatever day.
But it could be the third Monday, or it could be the third. I said, instead of the third Tuesday. But I know for certain, I'm just, I'm stating what I'm saying.
I'm sorry if you're mistaken.
Can it be the fourth Monday for our workshops?
But then if it's the fourth Monday, we don't always have five weeks, so we don't have enough week to have the voting meeting.
Can I make a suggestion? Maybe, as Nick had suggested, we nail down the next two meetings and then table it and come up, you know, after talking in executive session, next month they come up with a revised calendar.
Okay.
Is that, is that fair?
So we can do the third Monday for the next Tuesday.
The only problem with that is by law, you have to publish your annual meeting list.
Can, can the, can the meetings be published?
It can be revised to publish something.
Oh, I understood that we can do just the first one to advertise separately for just that first meeting, and then go into executive session of the time of the show.
Yeah, we could keep the regular calendar.
No, it's not an executive session topic.
I got you.
I'm sorry.
We could change the first two months, we could change January and February, keep the calendar the way it is for the rest, and, oh, I thought it did. Okay. Change the first two months, January, February, keep the calendar the way it is for the rest, and next month come back and revisit the calendar again. Now we're publishing the calendar that we're going to change.
And what about the, the public?
A fuss.
It's confusing fuss. It's very confusing.
You have to be very vigilant about sending out notices about any revisions that you made to the calendar.
When do we have to have the calendar outline?
Yeah, Kim, what is the deadline for these schedules? Is it seven, seven to January?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. Let me, let me do some checking, and I'll get back to you before the end of the meeting.
Okay, because we can go into executive session, we have it on the agenda anyway.
But not for that topic. That's not a topic for the executive session. Just so you know, the third Monday of January is March, the 10th, and the fourth is April. So there is work on for it.
And the fourth Monday, did we already discuss this? I lost it. What goes wrong with the fourth Monday of January?
Well, that would have to be the voting meeting, then. We'd have to have the workshop in the third week.
But when?
Just, just, I mean, the conference, the board, Tuesday, that's one.
The third Tuesday is probably-
Yes. The third Tuesday is, yeah, that is.
We need this month as is, for our rest.
Leave this month as is, for the regular meeting, as it is on here, schedule, and then talk about after.
And then work on the rest.
Yeah.
I don't know. Well, what do you think? I don't know.
I'd be open to that.
Just taking a walk, the cake day.
So here's, so here's what I would, to, to act on this system. Let's, let's leave the calendar as it stands, understanding that there will be pending revisions. All right, you can have discussion offline, we can come back in the public, Tom and Deborah can experience another fantastic initiation into board ed public debate, and then, and then we can come to a consensus, but, but as Kim said, we have to do it in public, so we, you know, let's just, you know, move forward.
Why wouldn't we just discuss this now? Take out our calendars, we got nothing else on the agenda, and take away from the voting meeting. We got nothing else to discuss. Not that I'm looking for you. I'd rather put it back and get it done with, wouldn't you?
Sure, well, how many of us can do the third Monday of the month? Is it only one of us? Hands, if you can talk again. Show hands, we can do the third Monday of the month.
Okay, don't look at February. Let's look at the third Monday.
You're going to have a problem, though, in February, too.
Is it another?
That's the problem. So January and February are-
So January and February, we leave status quo. Let's look at March. You want to look at. March only has four weeks, so you can't vote to, you want the third Monday, you say?
Right, it'll be the third Monday.
No, you can't make it the third Monday, because the third Monday is not going to-
Right.
And keep in mind, I think one of the, one of the goals was to, one of the goals was to not conflict township meetings as well. The third Monday should township.
We're going to have to give up one of our-
You know, we want to be, you want to be compliant with the township committee, but you want to move our meetings on Mondays, too. It's not, you know, it's, it's, it's too much.
That's why we have to hang them to each one separate.
We're either looking for the board ed meeting dates, or we're looking for the Milltown Township Committee and the Board of Education meeting, which honestly, I think our first priority should be the Board of Education.
Absolutely, but when I was thinking of it, I thought it was going to be pretty simple to move to one of the Mondays, the second, third, or fourth. If all of those are going to be an issue for a majority of the board members, then that's, then that's an issue, but if it's only an issue for one or two, and they think they can maybe change their schedule, that's a different thing. So what I'm confused about here is, is there a problem with the second Monday of every month for the majority of us?
Second Monday. Okay, that's, I'll ask you about the second Monday. Are we looking in February, are we looking in January? Where we start?
Starting, as soon as I start.
So it would be the 14th of January. The 14th of January.
I mean, we, we can move, move our shops the second week, we just will not have as much information if we were in the third week. More, mostly personnel and financial. We'll have, when you, I mean, you can do that, just explaining to the board that they're, I'm sorry. Well, we, I mean, yes, it could go on the, but, you know, we use the workshop meetings to explain things and walk through things, so we just would have probably more items that may form in between the two meetings, and we wouldn't have a chance to do that at the workshop. As long as the board understands that, it's, it's-
And would that be, would that be covered off potentially also by, Pam suggested, is we have stronger committees, so a lot of that would be handled in committee, depending on when those meetings were scheduled, obviously, right?
Possibly.
So we have, the second Monday of January is okay for everybody, the second Monday of February is okay for everybody?
Let's, yeah, let's, let's use the dates as we go through them.
That's what's with January, January 14th.
Sorry, I'm writing January. January 14th is okay?
The second Monday. You want voting, we'll say it.
I think that, I think then, what's happening is that if you bring this workshop in on that one week, and then you're not going to have a voting meeting for two more weeks, then, then there's going to be information that, that the district has to compile for that workshop, then there's going to be very new information that gets compiled for the next meeting, and both meetings are going to end up terminated workshops. So if you're going to have the workshop on that Monday, then put the voting meeting following Wednesday, and this way now our meetings are just earlier in the month. Okay, that's all they are. All we did was move it.
But, wait a minute, no, no, it's half line. Amy, the bill is, well, let me write it, if we go up with, uh, Roy.
Are you talking about doing the voting meeting in the, like, for January, would it be the 16th or the 23rd?
I think it sounds-
January really is affected.
So it sounds like, it sounds like January's not, I'm sorry. So I think that January's not affected. February, we would go 11th, then 20th, so that would-
The second, oh, yeah, going second week or third.
We're looking at second week.
11th and 20th. March, it would be the, again, the eleventh and twentieth, which I think we all figured out. Um, April, now April's an early month, so now you're talking about the eighth and the seventeenth.
I can't make voting meetings. When you move those more voting meetings up, I am not the...
Mrs. Kennedy, you need to turn your mic off.
Everyone who's talking needs to turn their mic off.
I can't make, when you move that week up, the voting meeting. I already have voting, other meetings that I committed to on that Wednesday. When you move that week up, I'm sorry.
But you forgot, we got this point tonight.
No, because you're only moving the workshop meeting, now you talked about the voting meeting and moving that up, so...
So let's focus back on the voting, or let's focus back on the workshop. So we brought ourselves to April, right? And we said that everybody's okay with the second?
No, we're not okay. I, I was, you lost me as soon as you went to the voting meeting.
Okay, let's go back to the workshop meeting then.
Workshop meeting I can do. Voting meeting, you lost me.
Okay, so workshop meeting is okay for January, the fourteenth? It's okay for February, the eleventh? It's okay for March, the eleventh?
Close, please.
Okay. It's okay for April, the eighth?
I just wanted to go on that. It's not okay for me.
Yes, and April...
I'm not surprised, it's not okay for me.
And April the eighth, April the eighth is way too early. April's a very early month. April's a five-week month, I think, so, you know, April the eighth is very early. So...
Yeah, I don't know if we can make a decision tonight, you know. I'm trying, I'm trying. I don't think we're gonna be able to do it. Um, yeah, let's just, um, what we can do is, uh, we can, so, um, we can't change the first meeting to, uh, the second Monday or the third Monday, um, or the fourth Monday in January?
The workshop meeting, yeah, the workshop. If you, like, and the only thing I'm saying is if you're having a workshop and a voting, the workshop will come first. So the second meeting of the month would be the voting.
Right.
Whatever, whatever dates you're picking.
So it's too late, it's too late in the month to do that. Right. So I think we have to just keep the first meeting the way it is and take it from there and discuss this, um, further.
And Pam, the other thing is, I, I think this does bear more discussion, and I think, you know, me personally, I, I could use a couple of weeks to, to think about it. But, again, going back to something you said earlier, if you're, if we, if we determine that we're serious about strengthening the committees, then we should determine, do we want to have two, two meetings? All right? Every month, maybe we do one meeting a month, two meetings a month, we do some sort of alternation then. You know, if we move away from the committee of the whole, then the need for the workshop is diminished.
That's not true, though.
Okay.
Because the committees are supposed to come back and then the workshop is supposed to be a committee of the whole.
But they can do that in a workshop voting meeting, so we would have a longer meeting.
Could we act, we didn't want...
I'm not, I'm definitely not, I, I...
Just a point of...
I'm not saying it, I'm truly not saying it's ideal.
So, because you had the question. So the Open Public Meeting Act says that you must publish your annual schedule by January tenth or within seven days of your annual reorganization meeting, whichever is later.
So it's since tenth?
That's since twelfth.
Okay.
Whichever's later. January tenth or within seven days of the annual.
Seven calendars, 'cause today's...
It just says seven days.
So that'd be the ninth of the calendar. Okay, so nine...
Typically, it's second calendar day, unless it says school days, if it doesn't.
Right. So it'd be...
Okay.
The ninth of the tenth.
So we have to make a decision by the tenth, and it has to be discussed in public?
And this is the only time here... It has to be board approved, correct? So you need to take action on it.
Tonight?
Yes, unless you're having a meeting.
Okay.
Just for the calendar.
So our options are to have, uh, one meeting that is, um, committee of the whole and workshop on the Wednesday dates that we already have, or keep the calendar the same, is what I'm hearing.
I think you have other options, you just have to decide.
But not, because the other board members can't make it. Could we do that? Could we have one meeting a month that's, that can keep these Wednesday dates at that meeting, and it's committee of the whole, um, workshop slash, um, voting? Because we're not going to have committee of the whole anymore, we're going to see all the new committees. So...
Have we voted on that yet?
We haven't voted on that yet, but that's where we're going.
But even, but even with not having created a whole, there always was a workshop, and there always was, there's always something to discuss. And the workshop, to me, with the discussions, is being transparent to the public. They get to hear what the committees have to say. We get to hear, we get to ask questions. You combine it all in one to a workshop slash voting meeting, you're losing it. It's almost like you're cutting the information away from everybody. And I don't mean any disrespect to new ideas, but to me, that's what makes us less educated in what we're sitting up here doing. Kim, I just have one question. Can we adopt the budget the way it is and, uh, with the calendar, and make changes to it?
Yes, you can, absolutely.
So if you vote on it the way it is and then have another meeting and then publicize changes to the...
Yes, yes.
I, I really think that's the way to go.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the meeting schedule as published in the agenda.
I'll second that. But we've had discussion.
We've had discussion, yeah, discussion.
So we just call for a focus as well.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All opposed?
So, how are we, this is my question.
We may in the future, but for now...
All right. Okay, 'cause like I said, I...
John, one of the issues is this has to be published.
No, no, I, I heard, I heard what, what Amy said. I just wanna make sure that we're, we're talking about.
So, so what you're voting on right now is the schedule as presented?
Correct.
In the agenda?
All right, and I'm just, okay, so if there's gonna be changes to, we're gonna be making the workshops pretty much.
What's that?
I won't be able to make some of those workshops, I'm just pointing that out the way it's currently scheduled.
The way it's currently scheduled.
Yeah, yeah, so that's fine.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And we're not gonna go to executive session?
We don't have an executive session agenda, so those were all in the action items, so the rest of the meeting would just be...
Okay. All right, so, um, I just wanted to finish what I was saying before, um, that we, um, are in a position where we can move away from the committee of the whole, I believe. Um, and, um, I wanted to reinstate the personnel, the policy, and the legislative committees. And they're already in our bylaws, but just to reinstate them. Um, I'm also hoping to start, um, the process of adding a strategic planning committee, um, which we will be needing to tackle our enrollment challenges. Um, and I would like to combine the facility and finance meetings, um, with the same purpose. And, um, I hope that you will all support me in creating, um, an adopt a school program, uh, where each board member is responsible for going to the events at their school or schools, 'cause we have such a big district that they adopted. And that's not to, um, discourage those of you who go to everything already, that's wonderful. But, um, just so that we can divide and conquer and have more of our faces out there. Um, and, what else do I say? Um, I'm hoping to have a weekly meeting with Dr. George, so he can catch me up on what's going on in the district. And, um, during those meetings, that's where we'll be writing the agendas for these meetings, so, um, I'll be reaching out to you all for your input, um, into the agenda, what you would like to put on the agenda. But, that being said, anytime you ever need to call me with any comments, questions, concerns, email me, I'm always open. Um, you know, I'm always open to listening to all of you, obviously. Um, and I would like to work closely with all eight of you. Um, I'm very worthy of volunteers, I'm very grateful for you volunteering your time, so I'll do my best to run the meetings as efficiently as possible. Um, probably a lot better than tonight's, uh, calendar discussion, hopefully. But, uh, yeah, and that's all I had to say. Um, I guess if there's any more discussions?
Yeah, I do have a question. One of our goals is to open up the strategic plan, so before you start that committee, we as a board need to vote to open up that strategic plan.
Okay.
We've been trying to do that for a couple of months, and we can't get everybody on board, but before you start that committee, we have to, as a board, agree, we're gonna open up that strategic plan.
So would that, so John, would that mean that we would wanna put the strategic plan on the agenda for the next workshop meeting?
Yes.
Right?
That'd be great.
And then find, find out how we wanna do it, who we want to do our strategic plan for us. 'Cause there's no point having a committee without the agreement to open it up.
That would be great.
That's the first step.
And I'll send you all an email, so you can tell me what committees you'd like to be on, what you'd like to chair, even if it's something you're already doing, just so I know.
So one, so one thing I just, I just wanna add, I think that this past year, it was my first year on, so, but, we...
I know.
And, bless you. And, one thing that I thought we got better at, as the year went on, was the committee reports. I think that Mrs. Stella did a fantastic job with curriculum committee report.
It's nice.
I paid attention.
Thank you, Shota.
And I think, I think that the, I think that the danger that Joan brought up about moving to committees and away from the committee of the whole is mitigated by having very strong committee reports. So just, what I wanna just get out there is, is in your role as president, you know, to, to be mindful of the, the quality of the committee reports, to be up on those committee reports, 'cause I think that you take a lot on yourself as the president when we move to committees, 'cause you have to oversee all of that. So just, you know, as we move forward, I agree with committees, I think the committees are the way to go, we get a lot done in committee meetings. Amy runs a very good facilities and finance committee meeting, I think we got, you know, tackled a lot of topics in shared services, I thought was very successful this year. Um, but, um, you know, if we're gonna increasingly rely on committees, then we have to make sure that what gets discussed in committee is appropriately communicated out to the public, so like Joan said, we don't lose that transparency you get from the committee of the whole.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that also helps keep the board in the loop, because we need to be part of, you guys are having the discussions, I'm all in favor of committees, I always have been, but the board needs to be kept in the loop on what goes on in those committees, so that, you know, when we come to a vote, you don't have any questions of why we're voting now. We, we should be well-educated on what's going on. Like, when you guys do the shared service, and I've said that about Robin's committee too, a lot of detail comes out, and nobody can walk out of here saying they don't know what happened at those meetings. And that's what, when we go on with more committees, we need to know that. And that's why I feel the workshop is important, because there are some things that are gonna be on our voting agenda from those committee meetings, that we really need to have a discussion on, 'cause maybe some of us have a different feeling. You know, and we can work it out before the vote comes.
Yeah, I trust you all to be good committee heads and to give a thorough, um, report, and that is from my experience of a whole year and listening to all the reports, I thought it'd been very thorough from the chairs.
My, um, my concern is that, um, in terms of, you know, what is the goal, for example? Um, you know, I think committees are good if there's a purpose to it. Um, I think that with the committees, depending where you are on the board and what you're involved in, I do think that the, the, um, I know it's in the bylaws, but I think it'd be, the bylaws should, should make sure they're very specific of what happens in those committees. I think the board has, should approve the agendas. I don't think we should have reports, I think there should be minutes to them. Um, I also think there should be public participation, like, for example, like a district like Howell does. Um, you know, maybe some of them you can't, um, but I would say that, um, including the public on those would entail into strategic planning, 'cause a lot of those topics become strategic planning topics, like curriculum and all these things. And I think what happens is then you have the five-year stra, the strategic planning, you come in there and you're talking curriculum, but it's already baked in the cake. I mean, we've already gone down a path, and it's very hard to believe that the district's gonna turn around just because, you know, some people, we went to a meeting and they showed us a bunch of things. So I, I, I think that we have to be very careful in terms of setting the agendas. I think conversations happen, and when there's board members together and there's with the administration, I think there's a lot of things that go on, and you have to kinda catch up, it's a lot of catching up for everybody else. I have that, I have that concern, and also about some of the committees, like personnel, I'm not quite sure. You know, if I was an employee of the district, I would be a little bit wary of that, where I don't think you have the rights to notice people about when you discuss them in those, in those meetings. I mean, I could be wrong, but I feel like some of those things are, you know, what is our role? We, we set the policy for hiring, we set the policies for reviews, I'm not sure what else we need to delve into for personnel that a committee would require. I mean, we don't do an executive session.
I believe the personnel section should be part of our post-session. It should not be with the board member committee.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I, I wonder about that. I'd be, I'd be worried as an employee what they're talking about.
We, we should be hearing everything, people do need to realize their rights, right? Like, I believe should be hearing everything, because there's gonna be something that gets by.
Mr. Nolan, if you could turn your mic on.
Little red lights on. So, can you shut it off in there? I mean, just believe people.
Alan Swaps?
All right. Now, what I'm saying is that personnel, I would like to see the personnel meeting be held in our executive session. I don't, I don't believe that a person of four committee member team can go in there and actively bring us back the information that has happened and transpired as we have with our personnel pulse. I think we all need to hear it.
So, as you know, if, anytime you're gonna talk about, um, personnel, you have to give them rights notice. So, it's fun, thanks.
Is that, is that only when you're gonna have a vote, or is that...
No, if you have a discussion about any personnel, you have to give them rights.
Even in personnel committee?
Which allows them, uh, to decide if they wanna have this discussion in the public.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Mm-hmm, sure.
You have to have rights notice if we're, if we're the whole, but if we're committee of four...
Correct.
We don't. That could be a rule.
Correct.
No, I, I just said that, right? No, because the four means you're not in a voting, you're not in a voting setting, so you don't...
You're not able to take action as a committee. But if you're a committee of the whole, that changes things.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying, it, to me, it sounds like a potential gossip mill versus something of a legitimate purpose for the board. The administration does the hiring, they give us the personnel, they talk about it, they give us, you know, folks they hire, they give resumes, you can, they talk about, you know, obviously, private things in that concession. I, I get concerned that we go too far. Um, on top of that, also, the number of committees, it's gonna become a tremendous churn. Um, and it's just a matter of how often, and again, setting the agendas, what's the purpose. So the, all the board can say, listen, this is what you're gonna talk about and why, 'cause Sometimes I find it hard to see where a four-person committee really does anything different than the administration would do for us in a committee of the whole. And I'm not saying anything. I believe that some of the, should be definitely committees because there's definitely things the board, in terms of our strategic vision, needs to sort of work on. But in terms of all of them, I feel it's a lot. That's just my opinion.
I second what John and Mike have said about the personnel committee. I feel very uncomfortable about having a separate personnel committee. I think that we are well-served by Mrs. Pecos and Mrs. Walker. In our executive session, I would wanna maintain that.
So, there's three of you who think that. Anyone else wanna speak on the personnel committee? For, again?
I just want everybody to understand that when it comes to raise notices, if it's new hires, we don't have to raise them because they're not employed yet.
Right.
So, a lot of the stuff that we get before us in the committee of the whole is people that are just coming on board. And from my experience, when we're talking about people that are already employed for us, there's a situation that Dr. George would fill us in on, that we would know, and obviously, that person would get raised.
I believe also, most school districts around here that follow the committee model do have a personnel committee. I'm not invested so much in the idea that we have to have a personnel committee, but it is commonplace. I believe that most school districts have it. And a lot of it, I believe it's not so much gossip as it is talking even about staffing needs in personnel.
And, right, and it really, the person who's chairing the committee is really the one who should be guiding and making sure that it doesn't turn into a gossip mill. That you're really talking about staffing needs and not individuals. It should be positions and not individuals. Now, if you only have one person in that position, then everybody knows who you're talking about. But it really should be about positions and not individuals.
Right, I think that Mrs. Pecos did make a good point that, you know, through the other committees, so for example, if there was a need in the facilities area, we probably have that discussion over the facilities. If there was a need, you know, on the teaching side, that might be a discussion that would happen in curriculum. So, you know, I, John brought up a very good point, which is that as a volunteer group, you know, again, they believe in committees, but as a volunteer group, you know, every committee meeting is an extra meeting. I don't know if you heard, scheduling meetings with this group is tough, and so...
I have the opposite experience. Since we've gone to the committee model, I feel like our meetings here can be a bit shorter because we don't have the long presentations.
So, that's the payoff, right? But all I'm saying is that, I'm in agreement with the principle of both committees. What I think we should do is be judicious about which committees we choose to staff. We can acknowledge that the bylaws have allocated out a personnel committee, but it can be your discretion or the board's discretion that it is not, you know, staffed at any particular time. And if there is a need to pull the personnel committee together, we pull the personnel committee together.
And, again, I would like to talk about how the committees come back to the board, right? Even though they're subcommittees of the larger board. I know they have in the bylaws what their purpose is, but I feel like the agendas need to be known a little bit more. I think some of the presentations in there, the public has to see those. And I think the rest of the board has to see them too. So, I think we're some of the issues in the past, I could be wrong, where, you know, the committees might do a lot of good stuff, but other people need to catch up. And sometimes you have to show the same information so the other board members, I mean, just from looking at when the board is doing that, it really came down to wasn't anything other than, wasn't about trust necessarily, but it was about, well, if you're telling me something, you're kinda giving me secondhand information, I didn't get the same presentation. And I think it depends on the topic, but I think that the agendas, the materials, and I think there should be minutes, should be posted. And I also think we should consider for some of these committees, having people from the public. I think Howell does a, I think Howell, I think it was Howell, does that. And they go, it's very successful, because what happens too is then you find people, not that we don't wanna be on the board, but people that wanna be on the board later on, you know, they're part of the process and they're involved. And then the public can say, well, I've picked, I've got workshop meetings, I've got voting meetings. And also too, certain committees, at least some of them have meetings, maybe not all of them. In other words, you might have to say, I'll make it up. Finance committee, maybe one's just board, the other month's like board and public. I would highly encourage that.
I think yours. Why not? Show me up? Okay. Nothing.
Just project.
I just wanna make, I hear what you're saying, you're talking from experience. Yes, experience. They wanna try something new. You gotta give them the benefit of the doubt. And I think, no, what you say about the committees and everything. You gotta give her a chance and let, and see how it works out, what to tweak it. That's it.
No, I don't mind giving it a chance. I'm just saying that I wanna know what the topics are. I wanna be able to see minutes. So, when we come to the workshop, it's not like me getting a download and signing with everybody else. It's like, okay, I know what they're talking about, I know they're trying to, there's this little thing they're trying to tweak. Because we didn't get agendas last time.
Right, but that was a different board. It's different.
Yeah, but I'm just bringing it up.
We're gonna share the agendas of the whole board.
I think, yeah, and people should, people should add something in there and say, listen, by the way, if I have a facilities committee, you know, can you guys talk about this, or can I throw this into the, or the president, right? And say, listen, can this be...
Like Robin does with the curriculum.
Yeah, it's been done.
Robin is excellent.
Yep.
Oh, go on. No. So, I always notify, right, I always, first of all, if anyone from the public ever emails me and asks a question about curriculum, it's always something I bring up at committee. And then I also reach out to all the board members and say, you have any questions, or anyone spoke to you and you want me to bring something up? As far as the agenda, I mean, we do have an agenda for every meeting. I don't know, I guess we could bring them to board meetings and...
Well, I think the board should approve them. Or look at them or something. I'm saying it, but, well, if you're doing a committee for the board and you're representing the board, the rest of the board should know before you walk into those meetings.
I don't think we should approve them, I think we should know about them, but I don't think we have to approve them because really, the agenda is set by Kim. She has to talk about it.
Well, that's true, but, okay, maybe I concede in advance then?
Yes, you can concede in advance.
So, because my point is if it's something that Kim needs to get voted on, she's gonna need all nine people.
So, we have, so we have the board portal, right? And I think so, this kinda goes back to what I had said earlier. I think it's Pam's responsibility to stay on top of the chairs of the committees to keep the board portal updated. And then it is the responsibility of the individual board members to go and look at the board portal to say, okay, curriculum's meeting this week, here's what's on the agenda. I don't agree with you that we should be approving what's on Robin and Kim's agenda, but I do think that Robin does a good job. I think doing shared services, we did a nice job of soliciting, you know, input, and I think we should continue that. And I would look to our new president to sort of keep us committee chairs in line.
Yeah, my only point is that the committee should act on behalf of the board. So, you can't do that if I don't know what you're talking about. So, and I think that, it sounds dramatic as maybe I made it sound, but for shared services, you kinda did that, sort of, we did, but it was sort of like, okay, well, that's an important committee. The board, you know, should talk about what are we talking about, similar to what we do for, similar to what we do for negotiations.
Right, we can share with the whole board and ask for your input before we go into the...
Or we might disagree that certain, something's on topic.
It's a little work for myself and the chairs, but we can do it.
Committees are a lot of work. So, I'm not a little bit...
For the committee? So, like Robin's committee, when she's giving her report, she's reading off a minute, so it's not gonna be that big of a deal to take those minutes and put them online and give them to you. It could be done, that's how it always was done in the past. Every chair sent out the minutes before the workshop meeting. So, everybody had a chance to review, and then that sparks the conversation of what will happen in those committees also. So, really, it's something that's being done, but we're just not sending the minutes out.
Right.
Because if you think about it, you read off your minutes, I read off my minutes, Nick reads off his.
Right, and sometimes, in terms of an agenda, sometimes Mrs. Pecos and I kinda come up with the agenda a day or so before based on the input I get from the board members and from the public and new things that she might wanna bring up. So, it's kinda hard to have them so far in advance and then approve them. You know, we'd have to plan it out so far in advance a month before. So, but yeah, I mean, I definitely think we could be, you know, make it more public and put it on...
Absolutely, put it on the website. Absolutely.
I think it's a great idea.
And listen, I mean, not to belabor the topic, but there's nothing stopping me from contacting Robin and saying, hey, curriculum, could you talk about a lot?
Right.
You know, stopping John from saying, you know, calling out to me and saying, hey, shared services, let's talk about football or something like that. So, you know, we could, you know...
Yeah, the only thing to remember is if I send you an email all night and you don't reply all with any pertinent information, it's okay to just reply all, thank you, but that's about it.
Please, please.
As per the public record, that's Sunshine Labs. Anything else? All right.
So, just to, I'm sorry, just for closure on this topic, will we see a list of committees on the agenda at the next meeting?
I'm going to send you all an email, tell me which committees you wanna be on, even though I have an idea because you've already done it for a year.
Are you gonna send this to listen? I'm trying to write down all your committees.
Yes, I'm gonna write them all down, I'm gonna ask, right, what would you like to be a part of?
Just read that.
If you'd like to share. Okay, so the ones to add are the...
Are you doing personnel?
Personnel, the policy, and there's legislative. Personnel, we talked about having on there what we may or may not need, depending on the topics that are related to other committees, that we can just get them done at those meetings. Because a couple of the board members have concerns.
They were saying about, we've been talking about the personnel, like your curriculum, we talk about personnel. Positions, and we buy facilities, and talk about...
I don't know if everybody's in agreement on that.
Oh, I don't...
I'm not for personnel, sorry.
One, two, three, you're not for personnel.
Yeah, but I think, but we are saying the same thing, she's saying it differently. She's saying that personnel is brought up by...
That's my fear. You were saying it before, I was saying, no personnel, let us talk about...
I'm sorry, but any of you who are speaking, you really do have to turn the mic off. It just, it doesn't show up on the tape.
Mike, why don't you clarify? You have a concern. Please, go ahead.
I would just like to say, personnel done as a committee of the whole. That's it. I like that idea that we all are involved, understanding what decisions you're looking at, and not getting that back at another meeting by four people who went to attend. That's all.
I second it. I'm on the right.
I'm on the, I'm for that.
I agree with Mr. Nolan.
No personal, sorry. And so the policy and the legislative committee?
Finance and facilities, policy and legislative, are, is policy and legislative together?
No.
No.
I've talked to Mrs. Rogers about creating a legislative liaison committee, so to speak, that would be something I would be very interested in being a part of.
No, just, not, well, what I was gonna say is not just because we now have a preponderance of lawyers on the board, but it might be, it might be a good opportunity, again, because we are all challenged for time, that if there's not gonna be something happening in the legislative every month, there's not gonna be something happening in the policy every month, maybe that committee does get merged, because I feel like the committees would be very similar in staffing, so just a consideration.
Just, well noted, but I can assure you, as I've been following this, that there is something that touches upon education almost weekly down in Trenton.
We need the help down there, so...
Yes, we do.
I'm not, I'm not purging the committee, I'm just saying that maybe that's one committee, legislative and policy.
I'd like to make a suggestion to that. If you're gonna chair that, that's great. I would like to see the legislative committee come up with a way to bring somebody into Middletown and help teach our parents how to go out and lobby for what we need, because they are so willing, they just don't know how to start. Dr. George and I talked about that through the Garden State Coalition, but if you could bring somebody in to work with our parents and teach them how to go out and help us fight for what we need, I think that's, that's gonna be a great step.
An excellent suggestion.
One of the other, one thing I'd like to suggest is, New Jersey School Boards has a committee structure, and they have sample charges for each committee. And maybe what you could do is take a look at that and see if that's helpful. You know, every committee has a charge, you know, what you're supposed to be doing to help keep you in the guidelines so that you're not venturing off into areas that you shouldn't. So, I recommend that to you, and that's offered, that's free. You can just call your field service rep and get a copy of those charges. And at least then, each committee has it, and you can amend it, but at least it gives you a foundation from which to start.
So, we have finance, facilities, policy, legislative.
So, the idea that finance and facility...
The idea that finance and facility would be merged and it's just one, instead of several.
Oh, good. And then we still have student services, curriculum, shared services, that were already in committees.
Yes. And the strategic planning.
Eventually, eventually. Yeah. I think that becomes a part of the committee once we determine the...
And negotiation.
Correct.
And that's it. Okay.
So, how many committees is that?
Thirty-eight.
Fourteen. How many nights? Three, four, five, six, seven. Well, as was stated, there is, each committee may not necessarily have to meet every month.
And also, can't they meet over the phone, via phone call, for any of these committees? No? No conference call?
Why would you have a committee if you can do it over the phone?
Well, I'm thinking like a policy committee, two people reading through policies, might be able to just call each other and say...
I think that's, I feel like that's probably left to the chair and their committee members.
Yeah.
How they meet.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know for curriculum, we meet maybe six, every six to eight weeks, it's not once a month, so, you know, as the needs arise.
Finance, financing facilities, we're trying to choose a different school to meet at, so it's, you know, every, every committee's got their needs and how they address it.
Some might be quarterly, some might be monthly.
I think your, I think your list is good.
All right, guys, I'm excited, it's gonna be fun.
I just wanna clarify, because we don't have established the shared services committee yet, we do not have a date established for January, so I just want the board to be clear with that. It's not, we didn't have a standing date because on either side, the representatives had not been determined, so I just wanted that expectation to be that we have to still set a date.
When do you need from me the list of the committees and everybody who's on them?
Well, whenever you have it ready, then we'll just have to contact the township, and then we'll have to coordinate with them. But I just didn't want you to feel like there was something set up for January already because there's not.
Make sure you have time to communicate. Eye board members, it takes a little bit of time. You have the committee structure again.
I do have a question. Can you confirm that the members of the negotiation committee that are presently negotiating, continue till negotiations are done?
Yes, that is what I would like to have it, yes. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
I have one for the question for Kim, if I may. I did raise this at the last public meeting. The township committee is now voting the idea of having the Board of Education elections in April as opposed to November. You were gonna look into that, we were concerned about who is gonna adopt the resolution first. Is it, is it the first one in that way?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Pretty much, and there's one district that I found where the township decided that they wanted to change it, the school board did not want to change it, but so far, they have not appealed. Because there's no real appeal, clear appeal process.
So, that is something I would suggest that we give due consideration to, and with some speed, if I may, because I do think the township committee is moving in that direction, having the Board of Education elections in April as opposed to November. And we talked about voter turnout.
Now, what happens if, Kim, this is a question for you, if we resolve as a board at our voting meeting, what's the doomsday date? I can't recall.
We have ten days from today.
No, that's, that's a calendar.
It was January, there was a certain date, it has to be, I think, eighty days before the election.
Yes.
So, I think it was January, I don't remember.
It's late January.
We cited the date last month.
Yeah, I can't remember where it was.
It is in January, though.
So, if we resolve as a board that we want to continue having our elections in November, and then the township committee subsequently passes this resolution, moving us to April, their resolution cancels out our resolution?
My understanding is the first one in, first, the group that gets it in first.
So, we need to get our resolution in ASAP, right?
The, I have the information from the last meeting that it's the eighty-fifth day prior to the third Tuesday in April, that would be January twenty-first. So, that would be the deadline to have a resolution to change it to April for this year.
So, we have a workshop meeting, oh, sorry. So, we have a workshop meeting on the fifteenth and a voting meeting on the twenty-third.
Which is two days.
So, do we need to do anything with our agenda on the fifteenth to make it a special voting meeting?
You could make it a special voting meeting and take action, if that's what the board wanted.
Absolutely, don't develop...
Feeling this.
Is that what the board wants? All in favor?
No, so, so, yeah, so, so, I, so then I would move that we amend the workshop meeting on the fifteenth, create a special voting meeting, and add to the agenda a resolution that the Middletown Township Board of Education elections continue to be held in November with the general elections.
I also direct, and that we also direct council to prepare that draft resolution in advance for our review.
Yes.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm standing.
We don't really need to, they don't need to go on adding it to the agenda. Right, they don't need to go on, but...
That's a special voting meeting.
Okay, is there anything else? I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Wait, public comment? Is there open public comment? Yeah?
Okay.
Number ten?
Oh, we did.
That was for the agenda items at the beginning.
Okay, there's open floor comments, sorry.
Hi.
Hi, everybody, Happy New Year, Rachel Knopka. I just had a couple of things based on what was discussed, and I just wanted to share some opinions. As it relates to the meeting schedule, I know the township committee workshop meeting is the first Monday of the month, and the voting meeting is the third Monday. For the public, I think it's critical that the Board of Ed meetings do not directly conflict with township committee meetings. I just think that is a slap in the face to the public. So, to the extent that you guys don't want that to happen, I think that would be appreciated by myself and many others. I also feel like whoever's on shared services might actually wanna attend the township committee public meeting just to hear what's said, so it kind of is important to not have those overlap. As it relates to potentially combining workshop and voting, for me, I find the workshop meeting extremely informative. I actually have really appreciated that every presentation that you guys have gotten to see, I've gotten to see as a member of the public. So I can appreciate why you might want to tease them apart and kind of continue with the model you have now, but I also see why you want to combine them. I just think, as you consider everything, please remember the public. Please remember that we want access to information, we want to see the stuff that's presented, we want the opportunity to digest it and comment on it before you vote on it. If you combine the meetings, and we see a presentation or hear of something, and then twenty minutes later, you're voting on it, and we haven't been able to go back to our schools, we haven't been able to speak to anybody, do any research, I think that really kind of eliminates us from the process, which I don't advise you do. As it relates to the committees, if you do move back to kind of a smaller committee format, which I can understand, I can see how that might be a little more effective, again, I think it eliminates public visibility. So if a committee meeting happens, as I understand it now, the public isn't made aware that they're happening, we don't know what's being discussed, and we don't have access to what is said or presented. Whereas the workshop meetings right now, we get to see everything. So if there is a move toward the committee format, I really request that you make them available to the public. I don't think you'll get many public attendees, to be honest, but I think the people who want to be there will make a point to get there. And I think that there are many people between the folks who attend, you know, the Board of Ed meetings and the pick committee meetings, you have engaged residents who know a lot about what's going on, I think could be very helpful. So just please make sure that if you go that way, you don't cut the public out of the equation. Again, minutes in that, really, if there are a way to make those meetings more public, if they can be recorded, just like these meetings are, if they can have minutes published, I think that would be fantastic. I think all, just opens up the information to the public, so that we can be more informed voters when it comes time to, and we can participate in the process and help you out. And then the, one last thing related to committees, obviously, you're very busy people, I know this is a volunteer position for you, and it was very clear, just even trying to find a date to potentially move one or two meetings, how busy everybody is. With that said, it seems like the list of committees is tremendous. I don't know how you're going to find time in your schedule, honestly, to do all of this. So to the extent that you kind of just pick a couple of big issues and focus on them and nail them out, as opposed to spreading yourselves too thin, potentially, knowing how busy you all are, I just think, as, again, a member of the public, I think we'd rather see a couple of big things get solved, as opposed to everything get touched over the course of the next year. And then, my only other thing, which I just quickly want to comment on, that's the timer, right? Can I have just like fifteen more seconds?
Yes.
Okay. As it relates to the elections, I don't know much about this, and I wasn't at the December or November meetings to hear any discussion that happened, but myself personally, I actually feel very strongly that the Board of Ed elections should be removed from the general election, because you'll get more informed voters. I think people who want to really vote based on knowledge, information, finding out about the candidates, finding out about the issues, they will get themselves to an April election. Everybody goes to the November elections, and honestly, a lot of times, they're voting with their eyes closed going down the line, which I think is a huge disservice. So I don't understand, okay, exactly why you might not want to have that combined, I don't know all of the details, again, I just kind of am learning about this now, but I personally think that you'll get more informed votes, and if you have smaller turnout, you'll have more informed voters. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, if I can just say, we've really only added about two committees, we have a pretty active committee model right now, so really only adding, what?
Two committees.
Two.
Yeah.
Legislative, we've cited no one personnel, we've cited no one personnel.
We're combining two then, that's better.
And policy, and then we combined two committees, so it's really not, you know, that much more. So it's kind of continuing in the same way that it was with the committee chairs reporting out to the public, you know, at the meetings, as we've been doing. So it's not that much of a change.
Okay, I get, my point, I guess, is if you each have forty hours a month to dedicate to Board of Ed work, do you pick two or three issues and heavy up your hours there so that things get done, as opposed to spreading yourself too thin? That's my only, and again, obviously, you guys know more than I do about what you have to do. So it's just kind of a observation from the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, Trish Maguire. Congratulations to the new members, and welcome back to those who are sworn in again. Just to echo what Rachel was speaking about, in terms of the overlap or potential conflict of the township committee meetings being on the same evening as your meetings, to take it just a step further, you know, if you just look at recent history here, it's really important for not only the public, but for you guys to know what's happening with the township committee, specifically because many issues such as Stevenson Park, shared athletic fields, the issues of development overcrowding, which will affect the need to redistrict, as well as traffic and safety issues, are really important for you to be informed of, and for them to be informed as well of what's happening with you. And I know that many of you are committing to, to a space where you are attending one another's meetings, and obviously, you know, if you're meeting on the same evening, it would not allow for that to happen. And just a second comment then on the election day, thank you very much for moving on that and moving quickly. Philosophically, I don't know, you know, where I fall on that, but in terms of having the schools close for, again, another election day, or another day that is not accounted for at this point, I think is not something that's in the best interest of, you know, our town and as a whole, so, thank you.
Yes, and it costs forty thousand dollars to have a general election. Thank you.
Hello, Sue Griffin again. Couple of things. First off, in regards to combining the workshop and voting meeting, I'm going to talk with two different hats here. I've been in your position, and I understand the time and energy that goes into being on your side of the board, but I also understand, as a parent, you guys have worked so hard over the years to provide transparency to the district, and the administration has worked hard, and the parents have worked hard to build a culture within the district. When we limit the workshop meetings, and we combine it to one meeting, and the issues are presented, and they're voted on very quickly, we risk that transparency, and it's not good for the parents, it's not good for the district, it's not good for the administration, it's not good for you guys. So I'd like to, you know, a little ounce of prevention, preserve that, those relationships, because they're important, and that's what the district is built on. That's that. The second thing I want to talk about is I am one of the people who's very much in favor of moving the election back to April, for a couple of different reasons. I do think it's become very political, and I've spoken to many of you about that. My other reason, and this is really more of my reason, is with the time that's gone on, the two percent cap is becoming more and more undoable, and I see that with pension assessment liability, with state aid being taken away from us, I don't see how we're going to be able to continue to operate under that two percent cap.